Good evening, Hopkinton. This is the September 3rd, 2020, meeting of the Hopkinton School Committee, and we are happy to be back live in person at Hopkinton High School in the library. So in order to, and we've just returned from executive session. I will say, we do not need to read, I don't think, the full disclaimer that we are, because we're not meeting remote, but we are offering remote public live streaming and public participation is through email tonight, per the agenda. So all the materials have been distributed with the agenda, and we hope that you will follow along. So now, at this time, I'd like to ask those who would be willing and able to rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is there.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This has been a difficult week in our community, and I would like to ask Dr. Kavanaugh to say a few words.
Sure. As people probably know, we lost a middle school student this week, and it has been a very difficult week for our middle school teachers, administration, counselors, and students. It's been a very difficult week for the entire district and a difficult week for the community. So I am asking if, in memory of Mason Lee, we could just have a moment of silence here. Mason would have been an eighth grader this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kavanaugh. Okay. Okay, so we'll start our meeting off tonight with the superintendent's report. I believe that's you, Dr. Kavanaugh?
Do you want to do a public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. My mistake. I'm out of practice being in person. Before we begin, we'd like to share a few public comments that we did receive via email prior to the five o'clock deadline today. Nancy?
So the first one we have is from Chris Toko, and he writes, "Knowing that the administration has been working in very good faith toward providing comfort to teachers in Hopkinton, it's so very disappointing to not have any agreement in place. We keep hearing 'All is well,' constructive and getting close with tentative agreements. Then, we're afforded the opportunity to learn a bit more from the HTA public statements. With very little transparency to negotiations, it is unfortunately not possible or appropriate for the public to pass judgment on either side to the matter. Rather, what we can see and assess are all the measures that we know have been put in place and compromised to put, sorry, compromised to put the teacher's safety right at the top alongside our students. It is hard to find any district that has gone to the lengths that Hopkinton has, and similarly hard to find a community that has been as understanding and passionate with respect to our teachers. So to learn of the demand," her phrasing, Becky Abate is making via the HTA, "that teachers offering remote instruction be allowed to instruct from their homes rather than the safe and controlled environment of the school is unfortunate and seems out of line. The reason I say this is because it is directly opposed to the guidance of DESI, which is offered with good reasoning and the very good reason Hopkinton is inclined to enforce this expectation. As such, I would hope this is not a variable in the negotiation that puts things at an impasse. Why would we pick and choose which DESI guidance to follow? We are not compromising the three-foot distancing recommended by DESI and even taking a much more conservative six-foot principle that combined with lunch complexity will ensure, according to Dr. Kavanaugh and the school committee, our kids will never see full-time on-campus instruction until sometime as we have a reliable vaccine. The reasoning is understood, though it's too bad not to be more open for consideration of a full return in such safe and seemingly good conditions that we have with regard to low infection spread rates in town. How and why would we then relax other areas to give otherwise well-treated teachers even more comfort at the expense of less optimal conditions for remote instruction students? I would offer that if we are following DESI guidance, we must follow it in totality and not make concessions for the demand of the HTA, who cast the accusation that the administration is insinuating a lack of trust in their work ethic. Then, there is a comparison by the HTA made to majority of corporate America not being required to return to a workplace, which is not even a relevant benchmark for the career chosen by teachers. It has nothing to do with a lack of trust to offer services, and K-12 educators should be more reasonably be considered essential workers and not self-compare their work to a bogey of a convenient association. Rather, the proper path, and that being offered by DESI aligned with our administration and school committee, speaks clearly to the logistics and best resourcing environment for those that are to be served, that being students. If a need to reference business, let's make it in the context of getting back to the business of providing a high-quality education for our students, which is the common bond we all share and reason so many of us live in and support the community, inclusive of teachers in all of our schools." So I have another, another comment here from McKenna Rogers. "Although I understand there's a lot to in-class learning, I feel like fully remote learning discussions have been pushed very much to the wayside, and I would very much like to hear what an actual day will look like for the fully remote students. How much time will they be on Zoom? How will their day go with instruction? How long will breaks be between the Zooms? Will there be project-based learning where they will have to do hands-on project learning at home and present in class? I am asking these questions for elementary-age children, specifically second grade. I feel as though very little information has been given to parents regarding fully remote learning, and over 35% of the student population is being fully remote, which is not a small number, so they deserve clarification just as much as the hybrid students." Thank you for your time. And then there is one final. Hang on just a second. I'm having trouble. So the final comment, right, it's just the one more.
Do you have it? Do you want me to read it?
I do have it. The final one is from Amy Markovich. "Thank you all for all of your hard work during these trying times. It appears most communication has revolved around those students attending schools physically, hybrid, or full-time. Will there be more communication geared towards those students who have opted fully remote? They have received very little communication and are now wondering how to prepare for their new-to-everyone school schedule. It would be best to have separate announcement and Zoom meetings by school for those attending the fully remote option. These students are new to this model this year and are looking for guidance and expectations for which they will be held accountable. The start of a new school year can be very exciting, no matter what model a student chooses. Let's harness that excitement and start these kids off strong with frequent and clear communication for all." Thank you. Amy Markovich.
Thank you, Nancy, and thank you to the members of the community who reached out to us with public comment. We appreciate that. I did skip over recognitions because I'm all discombobulated. So does anyone have any recognitions for today? I would like to recognize, if I may, our principals. I think our principals, Mr. Bishop, Mr. Keller, Ms. Bello, Ms. Carver, and Ms. Duboe have been working extremely hard, and many of us have attended webinars that have been hosted recently to help ease the transition to the school year. And I just want to just tip my cap to them. I think they've been doing a phenomenal job, and I want to thank them for that effort and the scheduling and all that. I mean, there's just so much going on, and they are the point people for where our plans get implemented, because they run their schools. So thank you to them.
They are working around the clock, literally.
Okay, so now that I'm all out of order, we do Pledge of Allegiance recognition, public comment. Now, Dr. Kavanaugh. Do you have the superintendent report?
I think so. There we go.
Very slow.
Okay, so a very quick superintendent's report tonight. As many of you know, we had our Let's Talk About Change event today. Lisa Winner, who is an adjustment counselor here at the high school, kind of came up with that idea, and we have incorporated the high school diversity club, the Hopkinton Freedom Team, the Hopkinton Police Department, Fire Department, Town Hall employees, so many organizations around town, maybe too many to name. A 2018 graduate, Freya Proudman, was instrumental in orchestrating all of this. So if you notice when you came into the high school tonight, there were a lot of fabulous sayings out there. I chose just three to put into my slide tonight. But I think that we have Fred Rogers there. We had, you know, a lot of Gandhi. We had just so many different phrases out there, and then even, you know, original artwork and things like that. But it was a pretty powerful day. Representative Dykema came, and it was just really nice to see so many people around our community and in our schools working on this project today. Okay, so people are probably wondering what our teachers are doing for 10 days while our students are sitting home waiting for school to begin on September 16th. So we've really taken our professional learning and we've divvied it up into sort of three buckets, so to speak. The first one is remote learning. So in order for us to be prepared to deliver the very best and highest quality remote learning that we can, we have a course that Jen Parson has sort of orchestrated for all of our teachers called The Modern Classroom. And in that particular course, you'll actually get to see one of our teachers' lesson plans tonight. But what it focuses on is to get teachers thinking about what are the things that if you kind of scaffold the learning and provision kids well and offer them the material and the order of operations, then they're able to do a whole lot of stuff independently before they even come into the classroom. So we're really maximizing the time that kids are in the classroom. So if people are familiar with a blended learning model or a flipped classroom, those kinds of things, the thinking around this classroom is predicated on that pedagogy. We have an awful lot of lesson creation going on at all levels. So after you've taken The Modern Classroom, how is it that we're going to be able to create these lessons and get them into our new learning management system? And that is Schoology for grades four to 12. So if you have that stuff put together, then you can go into Schoology and start creating your modules and getting your resources in there, videos, readings, any of those things, assessments, so that we're really up and running and ready to go once we get started. And there have been open tech sessions. So our Director of Technology, Mr. Gosh, and his team have had tech sessions on any of those kinds of things that you feel like, oh, my gosh, I'm not sure I know how to do this. So if you need to make videos through Panopto, which is a new product for us, we have a tech session on that. Or if you are an elementary teacher who wants to expand your ability to use seesaw, we would have tech sessions on that. And then finally, we have a lot of early literacy training going on. When you see the building-level improvement plans as well as the district-level improvement plans, you'll see some early literacy training that's destined to happen this year. Then we had social-emotional learning, diversity, equity, inclusion, social justice, and anti-bias, anti-racism things. So the Bright Group came in, and that's the Bridging for Resilient Youth to Transition Training. They came in and did some, you know, how to make sure that our kids are well-supported when they're coming back after not having been in school since March 10th. We had Visions come in, and they did a phenomenal training yesterday, cross-cultural dialogue training. It's training that we had seen as a school committee group earlier, and these presenters were phenomenal, and hopefully we can continue to bring them back for some next steps, because what they did was good, and I'm hoping that what they continue to do will be just as good, and we can keep, you know, our people moving so that having those kinds of conversations about race or equity or social justice just becomes much more natural to all of us. We had our chalk event. We have a consultant named Grant Hightower that we've been in communication with, and then Castlebrook Training. And Castlebrook is DBT training for, you know, things around substance use and abuse. So that's going on as well in that category. And then finally, in special ed and ESOL, they're prepping for WEATAS screening, a lot of safety care training. And I know you're probably wondering why we're doing IEP training, but now that we are delivering, you know, all of our instruction, you know, in an at-home model and an elected remote model and a hybrid model, how are we making sure that all of the provisions of a kid's IEP are met? And then we have some ESOL intake scheduling. So, you know, we do an awful lot of work before kids even arrive in ESOL, you know, so we're making sure that anyone who filled out a home language survey saying they speak something other than English, and, you know, we're getting all those assessments in place. And then the nurses have also presented to us a really nice safety webinar, how to put your mask on, how to take your mask off, you know, tons of things. You know, I could go on and on, but that presentation takes, I think, just about an hour, and they actually fill it with a lot of really good, relevant information. Here is the highlight of, or at least what I think is the highlight of my presentation tonight. Dan Collins is an English teacher here at Hopkinton High School. He took the Modern Classroom course, and he's got a sample unit on the house on Mango Street, and I will just say that not all of the pieces of his work are here, because it would take a really long time to go through that, but just some of the highlights. So when you start with that process, you think about, you know, what we must do, what we should do, and what we aspire to do. And then, here's what it would look like on the kid end. So these are all the things that I will need to do before I show up in Mr. Collins' classroom. So he's got a video entitled Elements of an Analytical Essay, you know, how to write the introductory paragraph, and we can take a look at that. Then he's got a whole bunch of examples of previous students' introductions, and what he does is he has the kids read through those, and then they assess them on a feedback form. So not only am I asking kids to take a look at the process, but then I look at other kids' work and I kind of evaluate it from previous years. So now I come into class, and I've got a thesis statement all written in my graphic organizer, and what will end up happening is when I come into class and I'm drafting my work, which is when teachers want to sit next to a kid, take a look at the writing, ask questions about it, now that's sort of really meaningful thing that happens when a kid is actually crafting their writing, is what's reserved for the in-class portion. And here is what it would look like when you open that thing up. So Mr. Collins has put in there a really nice introduction, and he's got all of the parts of that introduction kind of highlighted. So as a student, I can see which part, you know, kind of orients my reader. Then I give a little bit of background about that text. Then I have my arguable thesis statement, and then I have something that transitions me into the next paragraph. If we clicked on this, and I won't do that tonight, but if we, oops, I actually have the link to it up there, you could actually watch Mr. Collins deliver like this five-minute video, but the five-minute video is instructional. It's almost as if you were in his classroom, and he can take you through that whole process right there, and it's kind of amazing, actually. So that's how the entire thing would look for a kiddo, and this would probably take our kids just through a couple of days, but these units are all being created now in the event that we need them for every other day or for every day.
Sorry, Dr. Kavanaugh, can I ask you a question about that?
Sure.
Are teachers sharing any best practices? That seems like a great sample lesson.
It's a phenomenal sample lesson, I think, and I wish that we actually had the time for you to hear Dan deliver that lecture, because he does such a nice job of just really giving that to the kids in a very relatable, kind of quiet, kind of color-coded way, so that if you were walking me through that as a kid, I would know exactly what you wanted me to do. And all the other pieces that you're asking about, so where's the graphic organizer where I've written my thesis statement? That would be in the materials section. So anything a kiddo needs is right there. It's absolutely, yeah. Did I answer your question, Amanda?
It was, it was more.
Oh, yes, about sharing.
Right, sharing.
I'm sorry.
Such a great example.
I got so excited. Yeah, so at the, and maybe if you're a parent, you might remember that at the elementary level last year, they did a whole lot of that. I create the instructional read aloud, and then in my team, you put my read aloud out, Meg does, and Joe does, so that I'm only doing that one portion. But what was interesting is when kids came to the car parades at the end, you know, they'd be driving by and they'd look at you, they'd never seen you before, March 10th, but they'd be like, oh, you're the foundations lady, because that's what you would have been responsible for. So yes, what we do is at a grade level, hope that if we're both teaching AP Chemistry, for example, we're both doing these, so it lightens the load. You know, I might do one unit, you do the other unit, and then we just sort of share those two things. So just a quick enrollment update. This takes you through the last time we were together, which was on August 20th, and you can see that at the time, we had 3,864 K-12s in 4,020 district-wide. You will be very interested, I think, when you see the next slide. The next slide shows you that we have actually had a decline. We have gone down to 4,016 students right now. And I know that that is probably a little bit interesting if you look over on the left-hand side, you know, so we wondered, you know, what's going on? Are we losing an awful lot of kids? But we've really only lost 26 kids to in-state private schools and 16 kids to homeschooling, as far as we know. So those 42 students have gone out. The other thing that we are seeing is that our overall exit count is 100, but last year at this time, it was just about the same number. So it's really, it's just interesting. And, you know, even if we look at our kindergarten numbers, a lot of superintendents are telling me that parents are red-shirting their kindergarten kids. We have 267 of them, which is not off the mark. So, you know, I think that, you know, maybe we just aren't seeing that sort of home-buying thing that has been happening pretty consistently in Hopkinton. Maybe the pandemic has slowed that a little bit. You know, I don't have any other grounds to, you know, make any kinds of, you know, assessments as to why this is happening, but, you know, essentially, we're down four kids from where we were last time, but I mean, tomorrow, we could be back up those four kids, so. And that's all I've got for you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you for sharing with us what the teachers are doing over these 10 days, because I know our kids are longing to get back in the classroom.
Sure.
This is a really long two weeks.
Is that example you provided of a teacher's online lesson plan, is that an example of what's used on the hybrid-at-home days, or is that an example of what's used for people who chose the remote-only option, or both, or what?
That could be used for either or. It really could be. You know, I think when we talk about the remote model, you know, we had said kids could check in with their teachers every day, because if I'm an exclusively remote teacher, I can see my kids every single day, but it feels very unhealthy to have me have my kids six and a half hours a day. So there will be that kind of work, even for remote students, because, you know, it's good for kids to do that kind of independent work. The truth is that if we had delivered the how-to-write-your-introduction lecture in class, which would have taken kids maybe that five minutes, we would set kids together and say, okay, get going, you start your writing now, and the teacher would be quiet. You know, at that point in time, you know, the teacher can maybe just watch what the kids are doing on the other end of a Zoom thing, or, you know, but yeah, kids will be working independently. Or even if she's not doing that, we can turn that thing off for 45 minutes and say, well, there'll be five more minutes of Language Arts at the end. I want you to come back at the end, you know, so.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Kavanaugh. That brings us to the chair report. Do you have my slides by any chance?
I can do that if you just give me one second to fish them out.
It's okay if you don't, I can just speak to it.
Oh, I'm sure I do. There we go. It's coming. It's very slow tonight.
We really do look like we're all about to go into surgery. Perform some heinous operations.
Except for me, I look like I'm going to game.
That's right.
Dice and swords and.
We've got you coming up now. I see that, but.
You can just go to the first one.
There we go. It's coming. It's just very slow. I don't know why.
And the slides are really worth the wait, trust me. No. Okay, so the chair report is pretty brief tonight. I always like to start with community engagement. We've received a number of emails, as you can probably imagine, in the last couple weeks. A large theme of those emails has been around HTA negotiations, so I wanted to take just a minute on this piece of it. For those of you who may or may not know, we have had executive sessions recently on 8/20, 8/27, and tonight, and these executive sessions are opportunities for us as school committee to work with Dr. Kavanaugh on HTA negotiations. As you know, we have delegated Dr. Kavanaugh as our representative at the table, but that does not mean that school committee is not actively involved. So through our executive sessions, we work together on the discussions. We've received many, many emails expressing support for our teachers and for their being allowed to teach remotely from their homes. So because we've received so many of them, a lot of them have also expressed concern or disappointment that school committee or the administration is not very respectful of teachers because we are not allowing this condition. And first, I just want to say it's very untrue that we don't trust or respect our teachers. The five of us are here as parents and elected officials, but first, as parents whose kids are going through this district or have gone through the district recently, and we love the teachers, and we love the work that they do and support them wholeheartedly. There are many facets to negotiations, and the give and take that is discussed at the bargaining table really is not and should not be public knowledge. We have our representatives there for a reason, and honestly, to share bits of information in isolation on social media is difficult. And when there's a specific agenda, it really is, it's inappropriate when we're in the middle of negotiations. So you may have heard that our colleagues around the table here have been fairly quiet on this topic, and I just want to thank everybody for adhering to the norms of negotiations. It is very difficult, and a lot of emotion is out there on this topic, and we are working very hard with the HTA. The HTA is working very hard, and Dr. Kavanaugh. And I'm very, you know, I'm very hopeful, and I believe that we will soon come to an agreement, and I just want to put that out there, because it has been difficult, and I appreciate the restraint that we've all shown. We've also received an email on details of elected remote learning, a few emails, actually, today, and there was a public comment, just with parents wondering a little bit more about what elected remote learning will look like. We also received a few emails on tonight's agenda items. I won't go into the details until they come up, but one about the appropriateness of both masks and shields on the bus, two forms of face covering at once, and the other one was about effective communication that school committee can have and the district can have with the community, whether it should be email or press releases or whatnot. The person who wrote in commented on being surprised that we were on Fox 25 News with a segment that was wonderful, and Mr. Bishop did a nice job in that segment showcasing some of our safety measures. And the writer was disappointed that they didn't get a heads-up that that was happening, so. Yep, and regarding annual town meeting, we've been in two meetings this week, or since our last meeting. On 8/28, we met with the town officials to review the annual town meeting warrant and motions document, and that was uneventful for us. We have no warrant articles right now other than the budget. We also did filming yesterday. It was Susan, Ms. Rovmick, and Dr. Kavanaugh, myself, did an HCam eHop Know Your Vote segment, and it was great for me, because it was an interview on town meeting, and I had the rock stars, so I just got to sit there, and they did a fine job, and I'm sure that will be available to the community to get more insight into the budget in particular before the annual town meeting on September 12th. MASC I received today, and you probably did as well, an invitation to participate in a survey that's being done, I think, from someone in one of the Harvard graduate schools. I think it's a three-minute survey about how districts are supporting mask-wearing and dress codes. So I was going to take a look at that and answer that. And budget warrants. We had four expense warrants signed, 21010, 21011, 2112, and Q21011. You'll see two of them refer to bus refunds for those who have said that they do not need any transportation in the coming year. We also had two payroll warrants. And that's it? Any questions on that?
Thank you.
Thank you. Liaison reports. Does anyone have a liaison report?
So the turf field oversight committee is looking to meet next week, and we're going to have Sean McCauley join us for that meeting, so we can talk about some safety protocols to have in place and be ready for not just fall athletics at the school, but the turf fields are also used by outside groups, so. Yes?
The growth study committee met, and I'm the school committee liaison, so we met and elected a new chair, Finn Perry. He was very experienced in town, and also sent back the membership to seek clarification on the committee's, the growth study committee's charge. So that discussion will play out at the planning board over the next few weeks. That's it.
So for the Freedom Team, I was tasked with going and asking about diversity training. And I pointed out that the diversity training that we were probably looking for was more sort of goal-oriented, right, as opposed to just implicit bias. How do we actually implement policy and stuff around it? So I was given the name of Crystal Williams, who is a Vice President and Associate Provost for Community and Inclusion at BU. I emailed her. She was gracious enough to email me back very quickly, and she mentioned that the Boston Foundation has a list of diversity and inclusion consultants that could probably be helpful with what we need. So I guess the next step is to start looking at that list. It was also mentioned that Westboro has a diversity and inclusion consultant or hire at the town hall. So it was brought up to me that perhaps we could also contact them and see how they're, how they're implementing their, their work, so. And that would be my update.
Thank you. None from me. So that brings us to new business. Oh, office hours, first of all. I do apologize to the community. We canceled our office hours this week due to a number of different conflicts, one of which was the originally scheduled webinar at the high school and some other conflicts. We will resume our weekly office hours until the start of school next week at 1:00 PM on Wednesday. So that will, it wasn't the end of office hours. We were just pausing them for the week.
Following Wednesday is the start of school, correct?
I know. And now on to new business. Dr. Kavanaugh, do you have a school opening update?
I do, indeed. Okay. So this is the latest and greatest. My very good friend and wise colleague, Anne Carver, will very frequently say, "It's only true in this moment." So that's sort of where we've been now with school reopening, because everything changes in the pandemic so rapidly. I was going to just steal her line without giving credit, but I feel like I must. All right, so just a little bit about transportation. Students will be getting these new student IDs, and what will happen is we will be able to scan kids on and off the bus, which is great, because we have, you know, kids who are coming on Orange Days, kids who are coming on Green Days, kids who are coming on Both Days, and it will be really nice for us to know who is on that bus and who is not on that bus. And I don't know, Mrs. Rothmick, if you want to talk anything about those student IDs, because that is something you've been working on really hard.
Well, the student IDs basically become a smart card for all kinds of systems. So not only will we use it to scan on and off the bus, we'll be using it for touchless system in the cafeteria, so students aren't touching pinpads anymore. There's also a QR code on there that can be used for various software, and then the student ID is actually a barcode. So we can be using that to scan students in and out for attendance in the open campus model. So all kinds of things. So baby steps in terms of what we're doing. My main focus right now really is the bus and the cafeteria. But as Dr. Kavanaugh said, it's taking a bit to get that image, get it produced, and get all the cards here. We're hoping that they get shipped to the district the week of the 14th, and then we will then put them in the mail. So as you can see, the week of the 14th, you will not have your card in hand for opening day on the 16th.
And parents who are wondering, "What bus number will my child be taking?" You'll have to look that up on the website, and that should be there soon, but those bus routes and numbers are not yet published. So, you know, please don't be looking and thinking, "I can't find this," or be looking and thinking, you know, "Maybe I'll just call." As soon as those are ready, we will let people know, and then they can access them through the website.
May I ask a quick question?
Of course.
Since the student IDs won't be there the first week, when they go to lunch, what is the plan currently for the students?
So for the younger ones, we're looking at the option of them actually, the parents or the teacher actually having their student ID on a card, and for the older ones, they'll just verbalize.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. What's going to happen next in our first days of school? The hybrid kids are coming on the 16th, so I know a lot of the Orange kids are saying, "Well, will that be my first day of school?" No, technically, for the Orange Day kids, your first day of school is going to be on September 17th. We're not going to be pushing out work to you while you're sitting at home on that day. We would much rather have you meet your teacher, get oriented in the classroom. So it's been decided that, you know, Orange, I guess, kind of gets an extra day now, but maybe on the tail end, you won't, you know. But the way the calendar is built now, I believe that both days are evenly split at 85 and 85 days. All of our students, remote and hybrid, are going to be getting information from your individual schools, and they will be, you know, kind of parceled out according to your grade level. So for example, if you are, you know, a high school student, you're going to get a high school kind of a schedule. If you're over at the Elmwood School, you know, you're not going to get sort of that formal schedule, but you'll get, you know, who is your teacher and all of that information. Schedules are set to be sent out on Tuesday, September 8th. So just as a quick aside, I know that there were some parents who were able to see student schedules if they, you know, kind of logged in through, like Seesaw or Clever, because of, as we were, you know, creating class lists in Seesaw and Clever, you know, that kind of became outward-facing, and people were able to access it. We're very worried that as people looked at that, they think, "Oh, my goodness, now I know who my child's teacher is and all of his classmates and all of that." Please know that those are not accurate. We are still actually moving kids in and out. And I know there are, I'll go to the next slide, I think. I know that there are a lot of people who are saying, "Why can't I switch now if you're still moving kids?" And there had to be some kind of a deadline. And I know that that's difficult for families to understand, but when a building principal creates a master schedule, for example, so that we know in Mrs. Jones' class, we've got a 90-minute block of ELA in the morning, and then they go to math, and then they, you know, have recess, and then they have lunch, and then they have all of those things. Once that schedule is put together, our data management people have to put that, all of that stuff into Power School. It takes a very long time to put in each teacher's sort of individual schedule. Then we populate those classrooms. And this year, as crazy as it sounds, we've been putting kids in and taking kids out and creating Orange Days and creating Green Days, and having, you know, some of our English learners go every day, and then people will call and say, "I was hybrid, but can I go remote?" And we have had so much movement. And then finally, all of that information, data, has to get uploaded to Desi, because Desi watches where every single student is every single day. So unfortunately, our next switch date plan will have to be on October 1st. I know that might feel challenging, but if school starts on the 16th, that really is only a couple of weeks before you make your request, and then we'll try to process them as quickly as we can, but we are asking for two weeks, depending upon just how crazy it is. So you may not be moved until October 15th, or, you know, it could happen maybe sooner. We have no idea how inundated we'll be. And then I know that we had someone ask the question, "If I am a remote student and I am enrolled in an online course, so let's imagine that I'm taking, I don't know, AP Chemistry and a VHS course, and then I decide to switch to an in-person model." We are asking kids to stay in their remote VHS online courses, and there's a variety of reasons for that. But as you are coming back, if you are coming back, you know, those, an AP course has to cover the same material, but they may not cover the same material with the same sort of scope and sequence. So we may have covered something in our Hopkinton classroom that hasn't been covered online, or we may have covered something online that hasn't been covered in, in Hopkinton. So you don't want to have to live through things twice and then have gaps in the learning. So if you are a person who's taking the online course, you're sort of sticking with the online course, even if you decide to return to school in the hybrid model.
Yeah. Can I just clarify really quick?
Yes.
So, so if a student decides to come back to the hybrid model and they have that VHS course, their schedule will be created in a way that accommodates that VHS course, correct? Okay, so they will be fully integrated into the hybrid model with the space in there for that course?
Yes. Our building principal is nodding in agreement over there, so.
Can I, can I ask a?
Of course.
It just occurred to me, in looking at that. So is the reverse also true, that if a student was in an AP class that was in-person and wanted to switch to remote, and the only way to do that would be to go into the VHS, is there a way to make that possible, to move from AP Chemistry to an AP VHS class?
We are hoping that that is exactly what's going to happen, that we would take a kid out of that classroom and move them into a VHS. That may preclude, like, that may cause a problem with the timing on the move. So, for example, and Mr. Bishop, you can make sure that I'm correct here, but if VHS is enrolled by the semester, like, that kid may have to wait till a January opportunity to switch, but jump right up here and answer that.
Please join us. You're up next, anyway, so.
Yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. So yes, what you said, Dr. Kavanaugh, in regards to the switching the other way. It will be a little bit more challenging. VHS does have kind of deadlines when you can register for some of those classes, but from our understanding, they're going to be a little bit more flexible, given the circumstances, because we're not the only school that's looking for, for those courses as well, so.
All right. And I know that many people in the community are getting very nervous about negotiations with the HTA. So as much as I can tell you, I will tell you, but I do want to honor the confidentiality of, of the process. I can share with you that we have had a lot of meetings recently. So since our last school committee meeting on the 13th, we had two hours. The 18th, two hours. The 24th, three hours. The 26th, two hours. The 28th, three hours. September 2nd, two hours. And September 4th, which is tomorrow, we have a session scheduled from 8:00 to 10:00 in the morning. And I know that our attorney and I think the parties on both sides may have some flexibility, so hopefully we can just keep plowing through if that is possible. I'm not sure. All right. There are, you know, some things that we are still working on. The two things that we are still working on are teaching onsite, and if the district goes remote, or teaching from the teacher's location of choice. And I think, you know, it's probably not a secret in the community that that's one of the things that we have been working on and working really hard on. And when we talk about teaching, you know, from a remote location, what we're talking about is if we go remote, not the people who have been given remote assignments because, you know, they have some kind of ADA accommodation or, you know, an accommodation under the Pregnant Workers Fairness Act or one of those things. This is just if we go remote, will the teachers come into the building, or would they teach remote? And then the second one is whether or not to livestream any lessons. So those are the two things that we are working on right now. That second one is predominantly a concern at the high school. I think we have about 145 kids who have done elected remote here. So there are some of those courses that we are currently looking at. All right. And I know people are really worried, "Are we ever going to get there?" And it may feel difficult for you, because as a community and as a school committee, you've been spending an awful lot of time thinking about, you know, are we ever going to get an agreement? What will happen? Will our kids go to school? All of that. But I did talk to Commissioner Riley today, and Commissioner Riley has shared that 50% of the districts in Massachusetts do not yet have a signed MOU with their teachers association. So while it feels nerve-wracking to you, we're really not in a bad place, I think, you know, in terms of timing. All right, back to that same question. Are we going to get there? I do still believe we can. I am, I am hopeful that we are going to, to get to a place where we need to, so that we can be in agreement with our teachers. And, you know, we're all still coming to the table and still bargaining in good faith.
Dr. Kavanaugh, can I ask you a question? So is the livestreaming actually just Zoom broadcasting from the classroom to the students who are enrolled in that class?
So, I mean, I guess, you know, at this point, we are still, like, if we're talking about livestreaming, all of that would have to be negotiated, right? We would really have to think about, what does that look like, and what is the obligation for technology people, or for the teacher, or for a paraprofessional, or for the students who sit in the class, and for the students who are sitting at home. And, you know, there are a lot of pieces that we are considering.
Okay. Thank you.
Are you able to comment on whether you think that we've gotten to a point where we've accommodated teachers who have underlying conditions, as well as teachers who may be in households with someone who has an underlying condition, or is that still a sticking point? Are you able to comment at that level of detail?
So that is not something that, you know, when we talk about ADA or pregnant workers or those kinds of things, it's not necessarily something that we look at in the collective bargaining agreement. That's something that sort of lies outside of that, right? That's... And so, you know, I can say that the, a very large majority of our teachers who have needed accommodations under the ADA have been granted those accommodations. And not only have they been granted those accommodations, but they have been able to, you know, still work at a 1.0 FTE, so.
Great. Thank you.
This is the end of your presentation.
Oh, yes, it is. I'm sorry.
I wasn't sure.
In my mind, it was over.
Thank you. Does anyone have any other questions on the reopening update? And I think, just on the, what happens on the first day of school, I think there have been some people wondering, you know, "Where do I get my face shield?" or all that. And I think you mentioned that as families go to the school in the days leading up to the first day, to get the appropriate information that they're getting from their schools, they will, at that point, get their face shield.
Yes. And maybe, Mr. Bishop, because you're going to experience that in real life, you can share a little bit.
Sure, yeah. So the Planet High School is, we are going to offer two days, the 14th and the 15th, the Monday and Tuesday before school starts, for any students that are going to be riding the bus to come get their face shields. It's also going to be a textbook drop-off. We didn't collect textbooks at the end of last year, given the circumstances, so we need to have students drop off their textbook. And we also need to kind of figure out how we're going to get textbooks to our fully-remote students. So that's all going to be happening in those two days. And then our thought process was, for students not riding the bus, we will provide the face shields to them at first period. So we'll drop them all off with the first-period teacher, so when they get to their first-period class, they'll have a mask there.
Great. Thank you. Okay. That brings us up to our next item on the agenda. Hopkins High School elected remote learners. Mr. Bishop?
Great, awesome. Thank you so much for allowing me to have a few minutes here, and congratulations to you and Joe, having senior in-person in your election to the school committee. And I want to thank you all for just your work over the summer. I know it's been a tremendous amount on you, so we thank you. So as we get ready for what will no doubt be a very challenging and different and unusual school year, I'm here to talk about some additional staffing that's needed at the high school in order to accommodate our different instructional models, the hybrid model as well as our remote model, as well as supporting, as we just mentioned, some of our staff members that have been receiving accommodations that will be working remotely. So in any given year, when it comes to the high school schedule, for any of you who have high school students or had high school students, it's difficult to get all the classes that a student's on in normal times. Given the circumstances we're in right now, we're finding the schedule to be one of the more challenging pieces of preparing for the school year. I think at the high school level, it's different than the other levels, just the variety of classes, the leveling, the singletons, and some kind of teachers that only teach one class and don't have course partners. It's just set up a little bit different when you have these different, different models. And so our goal, and I first have to just thank the rest of our administration, Mr. Palmerville, Ms. Tice, Mr. Cormier, who's sitting behind us. They've worked so hard this summer getting their heads around the schedule. Our guidance staff has been in for two weeks, working tremendously hard. Our guidance staff has been in for two weeks, working tremendously hard, really talented group of people, trying to figure out what's best for kids and what's best for the community. But it's been tough. It's been challenging, I'll be honest with you. Our goals in this whole process have been trying to make sure that our hybrid class sizes in the different cohorts, the orange and green, do not go over a certain number. As you all sat in classrooms, you saw, to keep the six-foot of distance, I would say 15 to 16 desks is max in those classes, and in many classes, it's lower than that. So we've gone around to every room, we know the capacity in each classroom, and we're being very mindful of that when we make our schedule for our our hybrid students, which is about 89 to 90% of our students. So that has been one of our goals. The other goal in scheduling is trying to provide the 10 to 11% of elective remote students connection to our Hopkinton teachers. So those have been our two guiding principles, I guess, when we talk about the schedule. But there, it's been challenging to be able to do both. So an example of this, so when we're creating remote sections for our students who are elective remote, those classes are tending to be smaller than our normal classes within the hybrid model in-person. So we have a US History 1 example that has about 14 students remotely. So in order for us to create a section, we have to look at our eight existing US 1 sections that have about 25 to 26 kids each in them, take that from eight to seven, collapse, somehow take those 25 kids and sprinkle them into the other seven classes, keeping in mind, we can't go over 16 kids in a classroom, and then take that teacher and teach that remote section. And what we're finding is it worked in some cases, in some disciplines, but in others, it just did not work. We don't have the staffing to be able to provide the opportunity for our remote students to have Hopkinton teachers, and to keep the class sizes to where they need to be. And so we're asking for 2.2 FTE, so two full-time positions and a .2, to cover certain disciplines. We're seeing issues in our history, social science department, English, as well as science. So those are the areas where, when we're collapsing classes and making remote sections, we still don't have the personnel to cover all of our hybrid classes without having classes being above the threshold. So fortunately, we do have some, some staff members that have been with us in previous years doing long-term subs, that have, we have been in contact with, that if we are able to get these positions, they would be more than happy to rejoin the staff. And they are a familiar face, they know the kids, they know the parents, and I think in this moment, we have to have those connections as much as possible. So that is our first request on the table, is 2.2 FTE, to be able to make sure our hybrids classes are appropriate sizes, and do the best that we can to connect teachers with our remote students. It's not going to be perfect, it's not going to be 100%, but we're doing our best to make sure that in English, math, history, science, and wellness, we have options for kids in the elective remote model. The other staffing request, I know that we just talked about earlier, about our staff members that are granted accommodations through ADA to work remotely, we have a handful at the high school that were able to preserve their jobs, 1.0. They're going to be teaching remotely to students here at the high school. So they're not going to be teaching remote sections, they're going to be teaching to classrooms of students. So we're asking for three additional paraprofessional A-level positions. So those individuals will be able to put in the classroom to monitor the students, make sure the technology is working, and then just be there as a support for the kids in the class when teachers are home, or wherever they are, teaching remotely to that group of students. So that's the other staffing request. So it's a 2.2 FTE for the hybrid and remote students, trying to get the staffing where it needs to be, and then three additional paraprofessionals to help support our accommodations for our staff members, because it's important, I think, to all of us to have high-quality instruction and to have our teachers in front, whether it's virtually or in-person, our students. In order to do that, we'll need to add some paraprofessional support to make sure there's an adult in the room with the students.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop.
Yeah, so I'm happy to answer any questions you have with high school, the schedule.
Quick question, just looking at the, at what the motion is, so the 2.2 FTE is 2.2 FTE teaching staff?
Correct.
And then three FTE paraprofessional staff?
Correct, yes.
That's what I assume, I just want to make sure we get that in the motion.
Yep.
But I also just want to say thank you for being creative and meeting two really important needs that we have, which is, one, to get the best teachers we can in front of all of our students, whether they're remote or hybrid, and then also really fighting to keep our teachers whole. So I wholeheartedly support both of these.
And that's been so important, and I know that Dr. Kavanaugh just showed a, quite an impressive lesson from Mr. Collins, one of our newer English teachers. Today, we had some professional development, too, I think, Joe, you brought up the question of our teachers working together. We had two-hour session where teachers were working together, showing different lessons to one another. It has been a different start, it has been a challenging start, but I will put in a plug for our teachers, they have brought a positive attitude, they are working extremely hard. Yes, there is anxiety, yes, there is people feeling overwhelmed, but the high school staff is tremendous, and I know that they will do whatever it takes to be able to prepare, to get ready for our students. And I'm excited for the start of school, yes, I know there's a lot of questions that we don't have answers to, but I've been really optimistic and pleased with the work that we've done so far this week, so off to a great start. Yeah, Joe?
Yeah, can you tell me a little more about the three paraprofessionals? For example, how many classrooms will each be covering?
Sure.
It's not obviously one para per one classroom. How many classrooms are affected?
Yep.
By teachers who we accommodated that are going to need a para in the room while the teacher's remote?
Yes, yep. So we're looking at about five teachers right now that will be having to teach classes remotely, and if you count that section, that's 25 class sections over the course of the cycle. And if you have three paraprofessionals, they can cover up to 21 of those 25 classes. And then with our existing paraprofessional staff, we think we'll be able to cover those additional four sections.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Can I ask one more question, really, to Susan? In terms of where this comes from in the budget?
Right.
Is this coming from money that was related to COVID, or is this coming from someplace else in the budget?
So the plan is to charge all of the staffing that we need for these situations to the CARES Act. The difficulty is the money has to be spent by December 31st. Again, there is still a push for that to be extended, because we're not the only district that is running into staffing issues, and staffing, and also long-term contractual issues as well. So there are a lot of costs that will extend beyond December. So, but the plan right now is to hit the CARES Act until December, and we'll see where the legislature goes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I think if there's one thing everybody agrees on, is that our teachers are phenomenal, and it's the one thing we've heard over and over again from parents, is please, can I have Hopkinton teachers? And that's why they move here, that's why they stay here. I mean, they're just, they're so, they're so creative, they're so professional, and they have, you just, you know, they deliver great lessons to our students. So I really appreciate what I can't even imagine the gymnastics that you're doing to make this happen, so I know that
It's a team effort, certainly.
The community is grateful for this work.
Actually, can I ask one question, Mr. Bishop?
Yep.
So when the students are in the classroom and the teacher is teaching from home, will each student have a Chromebook or laptop with that teacher's face on it?
Yeah, there's a few different options on how we might go about doing that, but that's one of them, yeah. We could also potentially Zoom, but then there could be some feedback within the room. Kids would have to wear headphones in order to do that. So there are a few different kind of techniques or ways that we're looking into how that might work out best, but that's what we're thinking right now.
Great, thank you.
Well, I will certainly entertain the motion, if anyone would like to make one.
Yeah, can I just say one more thing, too? I just want to acknowledge the role you play as a leader in your school, to setting that tone of collaboration amongst the professional staff in the school. One concern I and I know some other parents have, especially those who, of us who work remote for our companies, is that our teachers have lost a bit of that sense of community by being remote since mid-March. And what you're doing over this week and next with your staff, I think goes a long way to recreating that sense of community. And we're concerned, obviously, about our children, they've lost it for sure, but we want to acknowledge that the teachers have lost a bit of that sense of community and camaraderie as well.
Yep.
Which I believe is so important to well-functioning teaching in the schools.
Absolutely.
So I want to thank you and acknowledge the role you're going to have building that back.
Thank you, yeah. Appreciate it.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve 2.2 FTE teachers in the high school and three FTE paras.
I will second.
Motion by Meg, second by Leah, we are all in-person, so we do not need to do a roll-call vote, so all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Bishop.
Thank you so much. It's really nice to see you all in-person.
Good luck, nice to see you.
Yes, absolutely, thank you.
Okay, that brings us to the fall sports presentation. Mr. Cormier. I'll just throw a shout-out while Mr. Cormier is coming up, just to thank him for coming to the office hours that we held on, I think it was the 26th, to share what he knew at the time, and that information has obviously been evolving ever since, and so he's a very busy person. So thank you so much for making yourself available and coming here tonight.
Absolutely, thanks for having me.
And the hangout hour as well, right?
And the hangout hour, yes.
Am I the library Apple TV 2? Library main?
Library main.
Okay, thanks. A lot of options that came up.
There you go.
Well, while this is loading, I could just say thank you for having me, give this opportunity to present our proposal for the newly-created, or what we're calling now the Fall 1 season, because as you'll see, we also have a Fall 2 season that now starts in February. A lot has gone into this since, over the last few weeks, since DESI and the MIAA made their rulings about sort of what was allowed and what was, you know, had to be moved due to different reasons, which I'll sort of explain briefly. We've had a lot of conversations within our league, between our athletic directors, and then we've also had a few meetings here within the district with Dr. Kavanaugh, Mr. Bishop, Mr. Keller, Ms. Rothermich, and also Sean McCullough from the Board of Health, and Tim Person. And we've really tried to look at this from sort of a holistic approach, to make sure that we're staying consistent with our academic approach, but also providing athletic opportunities at the same time. So I'll try to go through this as fast as I can, but certainly feel free to ask any questions, there's a lot here, and I, so I don't want to be talking for an hour, but I will try to go as fast as I can here.
I think there are a lot of families who are very interested in this topic, so please take the time you need. It would be the first meeting that we're, we're a little late, so.
So this is our new athletic calendar, and this is not unique to Hopkinton, this is what was passed by DESI and the MIAA. The big change here is this Fall 2 season. It is not a perfect situation, I think everyone can acknowledge nothing about the 2020-2021 school year will be a perfect situation, both academically, athletically, musically, or anything else. So there are a number of sports that are considered high-risk and cannot be played at the moment, so those sports have been moved to this Fall 2 season. For Hopkinton, that would be football, cheer, and unified basketball. We also made the decision as a school and as a league to move volleyball from Fall 1 to Fall 2, for a few different reasons, some of which are safety, being indoors, the concerns we had about playing indoors, and then also logistically, as some of you have seen what our athletic center looks like, it would be very difficult to play volleyball in there at the moment. And then there's also been no postseason. That has been voted on for the Fall 1 season. The postseason situation will be revisited for each of the other three seasons. The winter season will actually begin as it normally would, on November 30th, but it will be slightly shortened, and it will end right at the end of February vacation. Then we'll have that new floating season put in there, finish with our typical spring season, which will be delayed a little bit, but also extended, so it's not exactly shortened. Here are the EEA sports classifications as of August 17th, in terms of whether they are low-risk, moderate-risk, or higher-risk sports. The EEA is the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, and they are the state organization tasked with setting up the, you know, sort of risk factors and rules associated with outdoor recreation and interscholastic sports. I won't go through all of this, but you can see there's still quite a few sports that are in the high-risk category. So to be perfectly honest, for us to be able to play some of those sports at any point this year, we will need to see some changes in these EEA guidelines. And then here are what the guidelines allow. Again, I don't want to get bogged down on this too much, but the biggest component here is what is allowed based on their risk, and if you just look to the bottom right here, these are the real challenging part. And again, this is something we're mandated to do, and that is to eliminate deliberate contact, and also to minimize intermittent contact, which anyone who is familiar with athletics knows, that is very difficult to do in the majority of sports. It drastically changes the sport, or in some cases, it's no longer that sport. So here's what we are proposing to offer for the Fall 1 season. We would continue to offer our golf program, our Boys and Girls Cross Country program, our high school soccer programs, and our JV and varsity field hockey programs. The earliest start date is September 18th, but for most of our sports, we have decided we're going to wait to allow school to actually get started for a full week before we start to bring athletics into the fold, which is why you'll see the 9/26 start date for most of our sports here. We are leaving golf at the 18th, and the reason for this is twofold. One, they cannot, golf cannot play as late into November as some of our other sports, just due to weather conditions, and we felt that it's off-site. So this is a group of students that will be going to their respective golf courses rather than being on-site, so we did feel that this was something that we could begin on the 18th. And you could see our contest would start on the weekend of October 10th. Here are some of the logistical items that we've put into place to make this what we think is safe as possible. So we have created within our league two six-school pods based on geography. Some of you may be familiar, we have a TVL Large and a TVL Small. We did consider going with the Large and the Small, but we really kind of wanted to take honestly competitiveness out of this and keep safety at the forefront. So we went with the geographic model, which is what was recommended by the MIAA. So we'd be playing against Ashland, Holliston, Medway, Bellingham, and Norton. We would not cross over with the other pod in any sport, we would not compete in any non-league contests, and we would not have scrimmages other than inter-team scrimmages. So we are really trying to limit our exposure to other communities. For practice, we would allow sort of normal practices to start the year. One thing I do want to mention is we specifically started tryouts on Saturday, in an attempt to limit how many students were coming into the building and needing to get changed on any one day. And that way, we also had full use of our fields all day long, both Saturday and Sunday, in order to fully operate our tryout schedule. Again, we normally would have tryouts in August, so we felt the weekend provided the closest resemblance, you know, to how we would normally do tryouts for our fall teams. Once we begin contests on March, excuse me, October 10th, we would reduce the amount of practices to three days a week during the week. And the reason for that, as I'll get to in just a moment, is that all contests, with the exception of golf, will take place on Saturdays and Sundays. And then obviously, all practices will conform to the EEA guidelines and sports modifications that have been recently issued by the MIAA. This was the big, obviously, one of the most significant changes, that we're going to play all of our contests on Saturdays and Sundays. We, we talked in a lot of different circumstances on how we could accomplish having a fall season, and we felt that this was unusual, but it served quite a few purposes, believe it or not. For one, transportation is probably the most significant reason. Trying to have buses after school in addition to all the after-school routes, and to be able to sanitize the buses between these routes was going to be a real challenge, not to mention that we would also potentially run into triple-E issues as well. So we really don't have the option of starting much later, because then we could run into triple-E issues. By playing on Saturday and Sunday, we have more buses available, we have more drivers available, we have plenty of time between events, and we won't run into any daylight issues. It also helps us with officials. events, and we won't run into any daylight issues. It also helps us with officials. Many people know there is a shortage of officials to begin with, under good circumstances. With the aging population of our officials, many have opted out. Many also do not want to officiate while wearing a mask. So, our officiating pool is significantly reduced. So, by playing on the weekends, this actually provides us a better opportunity to access officials. It also allows us to have a trainer onsite for all of our home contests. So, if we were to play a typical afternoon, we have games on Field 13, on the turf field, on Field 1, you know, we're kind of all over the place, which again, under normal circumstances, is okay, because the trainer would just ride down, and our coaches are all trained anyway. But we felt like in the COVID era, we really want to make sure our athletic trainer is onsite for all of these contests. So, there is again, a number of advantages. And then the last one is no one will have to come into our building. By playing on Saturday and Sunday, everyone will show up dressed, ready to go for their game. We will provide bathrooms, but other than that, they will come dressed, ready to go, both the home and the away team. So, it really reduces how many people are coming into our building. We're also going to play, as I mentioned in that pod, so let's say on the weekend of 10/10, 10/11, all of our teams will play the same town. So, I can tell you right now, it is tentatively scheduled to be Medway. So, our cross-country team, our field hockey teams, and our soccer teams will all play Medway both Saturday and Sunday. Now, cross-country will only race once, because that is traditional, that they have one race a week. But our other teams will play on both Saturday and Sunday against Medway both times. Again, we're trying to limit our exposure to one community per week. So, if there were any issues, it really drastically reduces the impact. So, they basically will play a home and away. So, if one of our teams is home Saturday, they'll be away on Sunday. And then, we've also had to set a maximum game-day roster of 20. This is not a huge change. Now, oftentimes, our rosters are a little bit over 20, but this is done for a few different reasons. One is to make sure that we have the proper amount of people within a playing surface, which when you factor in athletes, coaches, officials, and game staff, you're pretty much at 50 if each team has 20 student athletes. If you take soccer, for instance, where you have 11 players on the field, that means we have nine players on each sideline having to be spaced out by six feet, which will largely take up the entire sideline. And then, we also have the issue of busing. So, on a 77-passenger bus, which is what our teams typically take, we are allowed a maximum of 25 people. So, this really helped us in all of those areas. Our middle school athletics, this has already gone out to families, so I won't go through this again, but we have, for a number of reasons, made a very difficult decision to not offer middle school athletics for the Fall 1 season. We are hopeful that we'll be able to offer middle school sports for our other seasons, but obviously, time will tell on how things unfold with the virus and with the school year. We do have a proposal, though, to help provide an opportunity for not only our middle school students, but also our high school students, who may be impacted by their season moving from the Fall 1 season to the Fall 2 season, or just other students who are sort of craving an organized activity, who have not had one. So, we're proposing to implement a strength and conditioning program for students in grades 7 to 12. And very simply, we would limit a group to 25 students. They would stay in that group of 25 students every single time they go to the strength and conditioning program with the same exact coach. We would obviously break this up by grade and gender as best as possible. We would not want a 7th grader with a 12th grader. And they would only attend the strength and conditioning program on the day that their cohort is in school. So, if it's an Orange Day, that cohort would go. So, we would assign them to groups of 25, no more than 25, with their own coach. And we would use some of the extra field space that we now have due to some of our sports not being, not being played this season.
How many groups do you feel could be accommodated that way for a cohort? So, like Orange Day, groups of 25?
Quite a few, because you can, not to get down to the nitty-gritty, but if you use Field 1 as an example, we could fit 50 kids on Field 1 with proper spacing and within all guidelines. So, we could put one group of 25 on one half of the field, separate them by 14 feet, and then have the other group. And with Fields 1, 7, 8, 10, and possibly 11 if we needed it, we could probably accommodate about 150 students per cohort, which is pretty significant. I'm not even sure that we will have that many. So, I think we will be in great shape to really accept any student that's interested in the program.
Thank you.
And this is something that we'll set up. We have not yet doing, we have not yet set up the registration for this, but we will do that through Family ID, just like we do for our, our other athletic programs. Some additional considerations that we've talked a lot about to come up with a plan, we would, the athletic fee would still remain $200 for the Fall 1 season, except for freshman boys and girls soccer. And this is a pretty disappointing situation, but because of the pod that we are in, and we're really trying not to break our pod, we're really trying to stay consistent with what our goal is, which is safety first, opportunity second, and then really everything else after that, there are no teams that have freshman boys and girls teams for soccer in our pod. So, they would not have any games. So, it would be strictly practice and developmental only. Now, they could certainly have inter-squad scrimmages, but they would not have the opportunity to play games. But again, we would like to offer the opportunity to have that year of experience, that year of development, as, so they can continue to prepare for their future high school year. So, I know that is a very disappointing aspect to hear, but again, it's somewhat out of our control. As the largest school in the Tri-Valley League, very few other teams can offer freshman levels across the board as much as we do. And then, the strength and conditioning program would be $75. And then, we have some information in there, because we certainly wanted to plan for the potential that we could get canceled at some point during the course of the year, and we certainly hope not. But that would be the cancellation policy and how the user fees would be refunded. And then, we would still provide transportation to all away contests, and we would follow all the same safety precautions that we have for our, for our students in the morning and after, after-school bus routes. And then, this was a big part of coming up with what was going to make this safe. Again, I don't know that we really need to go through all of this unless you want me to, but we have practice safety protocols, we have game-day protocols. And again, this was all to make sure that we are, on the one hand, following guidelines, but we really want to make sure we're even going above and beyond these guidelines to keep our students safe, not only our athletes, but to make sure that our, our students who are not athletes are not somehow impacted, because we're going to provide athletic opportunities. We want to make sure that the opportunities are there, but that it does not impact our ability to hold school. So, on a, on a daily practice, for instance, are some of the things we would not be using in the locker rooms, because we really can't maintain distancing or mask-wearing in the locker room. They would be allowed to go in the bathroom stalls to change. If a student is not in school on the day of a practice, they would just arrive right to the field, ready to go. They don't come into the building, they just come right, ready, dressed, ready to go to practice. Something that's new, now, coaches always take attendance, they always know who's there and who's not there, but we're actually going to force them to take real-time attendance using Family ID. We just purchased an app through our registration, which will allow us to know where someone is at, basically, at all times for contact tracing, whether someone's at practice or whether someone is at a contest. And then, we have hand sanitizer policies in place per the guidelines on how we will utilize that. We will, all students do have to bring their own labeled water bottle to practice. We obviously typically provide water, but that is something that students will have to do this year on their own, to make sure that people aren't sharing water bottles or water coolers. We will make sure that there's time between one group finishing practice or a game before the next group comes on. Again, that is not typical. We usually just, the next group's stretching out, ready to go, and then they jump right on. This year, we will make sure those groups have a window of time in between, so that we can sanitize, get one group off, and then the next group can come on. We will have disinfectant wipes, our athletic trainer will be around every afternoon, our coaches and staff have to wear masks at all times, and in most of the sports, the players also have to wear masks during practice and contests. There are some exceptions to that, but generally speaking, that is the rules. Again, not our rules in Hopkinton, but those are the rules in which we need to abide by in order to, to play the game. And then, again, we will just be constantly emphasizing socially distance. It'll be a little bit different, right? A big part of being a team is that cohesiveness and being together in a group, and coming together after practice, and coming together before games, and, you know, it's a little bit weird. I'll tell you, I coached my son's baseball team this summer, you know, you bring your hands in, in like a very large circle, and, you know, you just find your way to do it as best you can. And then, we, all of our coaches are given AEDs and med kits. Now, they're also going to be given a sanitizing kit that will have the extra masks for any student that may forget one, or, let's face it, they do break, especially if you're playing a sport, the chances are it could break even at a higher rate. So, we will make sure that we have hand sanitizer masks and wipes.
Just to clarify, if a student needs to come in on their asynchronous day, they have to find a way to get themselves here, right? There will not be busing or any sort of thing to bring them into the school?
Correct.
Okay.
In order to do this, we're definitely going to be asking more of families than we typically would, 100%. And then, these are our game-day protocols. I do want to mention the first one, since this will certainly be difficult, but as a league, again, in an effort of making sure that we can control what we can control and be as safe as possible, to at least begin the Fall season, we will not have any spectators at our events. Again, due to contact tracing rules, and trying to minimize contact and any sort of safety issue, this was not an easy decision. The principals voted 12-0. I mean, many of us, myself included, are parents. This was a very difficult decision, but again, we didn't want anything to potentially jeopardize the, the ability for the students to play and have these opportunities. And this is something we may revisit. If things are going smoothly, then we may start to provide opportunities where, where spectators can come. We are going to be live streaming as many events as we can, and not just the varsity contest, but also the JV contest as well. Thank you to HCam for hopefully helping us out quite a bit in those scenarios. And again, so no teams will come into our locker rooms, they'll come ready to play. Again, this will be a weekend. We have contact tracing for both the visiting team, as well as our own team, and then a lot of everything else is similar to what we do at our practices as well. In little things, we're putting carabiners on the fence, six feet apart, so that the bags won't be able to group together. So, we're actually going to space out the backpacks across the fence as well. So, we're taking a lot of those minor, small details to make sure that we're safe and doing what we need to. And then, the last one is our athletic training room. Again, this is a tricky one. Our athletic training room is quite busy after school, so we're going to have to set more strict limits. Our trainer will wear PPE, very similar to a school nurse when working with students. And we're also, whenever weather permits, we plan to set up our training room outside under a tent for better open air. We've actually purchased some portable tables, so the students wouldn't have to just stand up, they could still, you know, lay down if they need to, or if they're injured. So, this will be a big, a big piece whenever we can, to allow our trainer to be safer, be outside, and have the students also be able to be treated outside each afternoon. And then, of course, on game day, the trainer will be down on the field, and we'll set up the tables down there in case anyone needs to be taped or anything prior to a contest.
Mr. Cormier, can you talk about who is eligible to participate in athletics?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Who is eligible to participate in athletics? Is it people who are on hybrid, if you're remote, elected remote? Are you eligible?
So, any, any student at Hopkinton High School would be eligible. So, whether you are in the hybrid model or fully elected remote model, you would have the opportunity to participate in athletics.
And is that the same for the 7 to 12 training?
The 7 to 12 training, that's something we may have to iron out, because the goal of that was to make sure that they came on their cohort day.
Oh, right, yep.
So, that might be something that Dr. Kavanaugh and I have to sort of iron out, because again, we wanted that to really follow the cohort model, particularly at the middle school, where they're in much smaller groups throughout the day. So, that's something we may have to revisit. But for the high school teams, whether you are elected remote or hybrid, you would be able to attend and play.
Thank you. Who has questions?
Go ahead.
Joe?
Yeah. First, you've done a great job with the limitations that were, are forced on you. It's, it's very disappointing, right, to see some sports not, kids not be able to do their sports. But these are the guidelines you have from DESI and MIAA, and I think you've done a good job with those.
Thank you.
I'm especially happy to see the option of a strength and conditioning program. I was wondering, what are these kids going to do? So, providing some alternative, so they can do something? Something, anything is great. And then, I have a question on the 20 stu, the 20-athlete limit. So, remind me, like, with cross-country, haven't we had teams of like 80-plus some years, and how will that work?
Yeah, cross-country will be largely the most impacted on a few different levels. So, only 20 boys and 20 girls will be able to compete in our race on Saturday. So, all of their races are scheduled for Saturday, and if the weather was poor, we can push it to Sunday. And our teams are much bigger than 20. So, they are the most impacted. What we're looking at, but unfortunately, the pod that we are in, many of their teams are not large enough, but what we plan to do is offer a race on Sunday as well, for some of those other students to be able to race. But unfortunately, a lot of the teams that we're playing don't even have 20. So, what we will probably end up doing on Sunday is having our own sort of inter-squad race, so that those students will still have a chance to have that timed race experience. And again, it won't be perfect by any means, but we're hoping it still gives them the opportunity to run, to be active, to be part of a team, you know, and hopefully prepare for our other seasons, where hopefully, if things go well, we, we might have a little bit more normal circumstances.
And the 20 only apply to the games?
Yes.
Or competitions? So, for practice during the week?
We can have up to 25 up to practice. Again, we can't extend 25 for our soccer and field hockey teams. Cross-country can actually have larger than 25, because they can break into smaller groups to do their training runs. But for, under the guidelines for what is allowed on the playing surface, we actually cannot have a roster bigger than 25. So, there could be a situation where a coach does keep more than 20, but they'll be very clear with students and families about where they may stand at a given point.
Okay, thank you.
So, can I just, I have a clarification off of that. So, my recollection is that cross-country is very similar to track and field, where you get like over 100 kids who would sign up. Would that then have to become a cut sport?
So, again, we're not, we're not looking to cut anybody in cross-country.
Yep.
But many of the students on the team would not have an opportunity to race in a TVL meet.
But they're able to practice more than the 25 in some way by breaking?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that was.
Oh, yeah. Can you clarify that? Because that wasn't, so, you, you mentioned for practice 25, but you're saying?
So, if cross-country, because, so, the difference is, it's a good question. So, the difference with soccer and field hockey in particular, is they're on a playing sur, a set clearly-defined space, so we have to follow the 25 maximum limit with cross-country, because they tend, they tend to break into groups anyway, based on their speed, when they do their different workouts. So, they already break into smaller groups. So, as a result, as long as we don't have a group of 25, or, excuse me, larger than 25, they're able to, to still be part of the team.
So, they could still have a team of 80-plus, like they traditionally do?
Yes.
Got it, okay, got it.
Hi.
I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, I've already asked my questions, but I really, truly appreciate how hard you have worked to make this as safe as possible for the students and still allow them this opportunity. This, this really has to have been extremely hard to do.
It was sort of a microcosm of what the school, right, trying to figure out school just on a slightly smaller scale, but yeah.
But yeah, so, it's very appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to follow up a clarification on what Amanda had asked. Is homeschooled students typically are allowed to participate in athletics as well?
Yes, as long as it's part of their homeschooled program, their approved program, then they are eligible, yes.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
No, I appreciate how thorough you were in getting down into the, the nitty-gritty and, and just continue to be impressed with all these modifications that plans for every single thing that is done related to our schools that have come forward, so.
I had two questions for you, if you don't mind, Rich. What about the poor sixth graders?
So, our sixth, our sixth graders are actually not included in the middle school athletic program, which is why we did not include them in this either. I think if we had space, we certainly could potentially open it up to them, but we only offer one sport at the moment to sixth graders, which is wrestling in the winter season. So, they're not typically part of our athletic program at, at that grade anyway.
Oh, and how many wrestlers do you usually get from the sixth grade?
Three.
Okay. So, my second question is about unified sports. I know you've had to put off the unified basketball. Was there anything else that the unified players did in the fall?
So, in the fall, it's typically unified basketball, and in the spring, we have unified track and field.
So, they just can't do anything really in the fall?
Unfortunately.
Thank you.
You know, I just want to echo everybody's comments. I mean, this is another one of these, you know, gymnastics activities, to try to figure out how to make this possible for our athletes. And I think at one point, you said there are typically about 500 kids, maybe in the fall, who actually do athletics. So, it's a significant portion of our student body turns to athletics for that stress release and that... release and that socialization and so forth. So I really appreciate this. I appreciate all the detailed safety precautions, because while there are so many athletes, there are also so many people who are nervous about coming into school already and are not choosing athletics, which brings with it additional exposure. So we need to protect, of course, as a school committee, every student, and I think you've done a really good job of putting safety precautions in. So I guess, having kids, as we all do, I, my question is, how will we oversee this? And what will be the consequences for not adhering to the safety protocols? And I hate to ask this question, but you know, I just have two kids who just went to college, and they're under significant safety protocols, as you can imagine, and there are consequences. And it's hard for kids to follow rules. So I, I just know the beauty of the, of the team and the spaggers and the, let's hop in a car and go to Wendy's and, you know, all the things that you do that makes the team experience so great, which would then put the kids at higher risk, and they wouldn't really fit necessarily what we're aiming to deliver here. So what, what messaging is going out to families and coaches, and what kinds of like, just drop-ins or checkpoints will you be able to offer?
So a couple of things. So not much of this is, this is really the first time this has been released to sort of the community at large as we've put this together. So a lot more, and that's, I think, going to be, you know, one of the main reasons why we're doing things on the weekends is so that we don't have too many things going on at once, so that we can manage it. So we will have one game, then another game, you know, we won't even play soccer at the same time, which many communities do. Play the, you know, we could play the JV and Field 13 and varsity on the turf. We will not be doing that. We will actually be playing every single game on, for those sports, on the turf. And we will also be doing cross country at a time in which it does not conflict with those other events. So every event will sort of be unique in and of itself, to make sure that we have enough oversight and supervision.
That sounds good. I think the players will definitely listen to the coaches. The coaches wield a lot of power, the players respect and listen to their coaches. So as long as the messaging is getting out, I think, you know, we can be optimistic, hopefully. So much is riding on a successful trial this fall, so hopefully it will, it will go well. Did you want to roll into the, since I had that leading question about oversight, do you want to roll into the next?
Sure, so in our, I don't have a slide for this, but in our meeting the other day with both Dr. Kavanaugh and Mrs. Rotherhithe, we were talking about just this exact question, how to make sure we do have enough supervision, given all the restrictions. You know, coaches are very good at seeing a million things at once, it's kind of part of just being a coach. But we do want to make sure that they're able to break them into smaller groups as needed at practice, and to make sure that we have the proper supervision prior to practice starting, when practice starts and after practice. And we also made a decision to be consistent. Again, we're trying to be as consistent with athletics as we are in everything else, and since we are not allowing volunteers right now to help out in various school-sponsored activities, we felt that we could not allow volunteers to coach. As many of you probably know, we have many, many volunteers that we're very grateful for, that donate a lot of time to help our athletic teams. But again, to be consistent with what we're trying to do, we felt that we could not have volunteer coaches or volunteers in athletics, where we don't have volunteers anywhere else. So what I've requested is one assistant coach to be paid a small stipend of $2,000 per the six programs that we are running. So one for each cross country team, one for each soccer team, one for our field hockey program, and one for our golf program. And this would make sure that we don't have those sort of gaps at all, and that we have that proper supervision. And unfortunately, because we're not having middle school sports, the, the financial aspect of this is, is not, you know, is not an issue. We certainly have the money to cover these $12,000, or this, excuse me, this total of $12,000. And to me, I think it's really a small price to make sure our kids are safe, to make sure we have that proper supervision, now that we're losing these volunteer coaches that we typically would have. And I do want to point out that one of the pieces of being a volunteer coach is, why some people choose to be volunteer coaches is because of their job schedule, right? They want to coach, and they love sports, and they love kids, but because of their job schedule, they can only come sometimes. And that's fine when you're a volunteer. For this position, the expectation is that they will be at every practice and every contest. So this is not just, we're taking those volunteer coaches and paying them, we're finding someone who can make the commitment every single day to be at our practices and our contests, to be an extra part of our coaching staff for this Fall 1 season.
And these positions would be just for Fall 1, right? They wouldn't be built in?
Correct, just for Fall 1.
Just for Fall 1 of this year?
Mm-hmm.
I will comment on this. I love the idea of the assistant coaches. I think for anyone who's had someone, an athlete on a team where there has been a volunteer coach, it really enhances the experience by enabling the head coach to focus on the head coach's job and to sort of keep the team, you know, going and motivated. The assistant volunteers play a very important role. So I, I support the idea where, you know, and this is kind of a conversation that has to happen at some point, there's no good entry point for this conversation, but I think where I get stopped is the $2,000 compensation, because I feel for so many of our stipended, stipended positions that put in the same or more hours over the course of an academic year and just don't keep pace with athletics. So somebody, for example, like jazz band, run it for the whole year, a lot of hours, it doesn't, it doesn't come up to $2,000 for the year as a stipend. So I get a little bit stopped, and it's not really the full conversation for today, it's a different conversation, but in that we're being asked to support that this amount per assistant coach, I just hesitate. I'm looking, I'm looking long-term at more equity across extracurriculars. We have robotics coaches and, and other coaches who coach teams that are competitive, and they just don't get to the same threshold as our athletics coaches. And I don't want to take anything away from anybody, but I just feel a little uneasy knowing those numbers. But I, I probably stand alone, and again, it is a much larger conversation, but for me, it's, it's just a little tricky to see the number of 2,000, knowing how much time and energy and, and effort and commitment and showing up every day so many of our other stipended positions put in. So I don't know how my colleagues feel.
I don't think you stand alone. I'm a geek, so you know, robotics team and the work they put in, my kids when they were younger were part of that kind of thing. So I do agree with you, though, that it's probably a conversation for a different time, just because we have a limited amount of time to make a decision on this, and it's so important to get the fall moving. But I would love to see it as a agenda item or something that we could discuss more fully.
Do we want to entertain the idea of, of a different number?
You know, if, if I may, it made sense when you were explaining it. I hadn't realized the situation we're in with the other positions. But can you reiterate again? I mean, you've had parent volunteers in the past, or teacher volunteers, and you're making sure this is going to be teacher volunteers, or is it going to be a mix of teacher volunteers and parent, and then teacher stipended?
So the volunteer coaches vary. Some may be a parent, many are teachers, many are neither.
Okay.
So it does vary from, from sport to sport. And again, the volunteer coaches do go through a process, so they're not just these random people that just get to show up, right? They are CPR certified, they go through concussion testing, they're coreied, you know, all of those things, they come to our coaches' meetings. So they are very much part of our coaching staff. But at the end of the day, they are volunteers. So from a liability standpoint, we don't allow them to be the lone supervisor of the group, like they cannot be the lone person on a bus, for instance, with the group. So by making these positions paid, it helps us in that aspect. Now they are full employees of the Hopkinton Public School, so they will have to go through the same process that really they already go through, but now they'll actually have to sign the paperwork to be an employee here. And I obviously can't comment, because to be perfectly honest, I don't know what the other stipends make. But from my experience in athletics, I would say $2,000 is a relatively nominal fee for what we're asking. And again, I get that there may be a disparity, I fully appreciate that, because I don't quite know what those other groups make. But you know, this person's going to be working for between seven and eight weeks, multiple hours a day with our students in a pretty intense environment, in a, in a very responsible role in terms of what they're asked to do. And I think we want to make sure that we're hiring people that are really quality coaches. I don't view this position as someone who is just like a monitor. This is someone who is part of our coaching staff, who will be instructing at practice. Many of them are also teachers, but not all of them. Again, we haven't hired these positions, so some may end up being teachers, some may not be teachers. We really want the person to be an expert in the particular sport, someone that can make the commitment to practices and contests, which again, we're asking someone to give up Saturday and Sunday for the entire fall, to be, to be at these contests. So I do think the $2,000 for, just for this one season, again, this is not something that's going to be continued on in future seasons. I hope, I hope we're back to normal. And, and so I do, I do think for this purpose, it will help us get quality individuals for these particular positions.
And I do think you're right. I did look at the pay structure for the coaches, and I do think this is a very modest stipend, given our, you know, what we typically do. So I appreciate that you came in low. Not that, not that I don't want the coaches to have it, again, it's just about equity. It's not, and I think this is an excellent idea. And I, you know, given where we are, I'm willing to move forward, but I would ask the school committee that we maybe consider a conversation later about this topic.
So if I'm not mistaken, the, all the stipended positions are part of the HTA contract that will be negotiated, we're in a negotiating year, so that would be a good opportunity to look at equity at that point, yes?
Yes, I was just thinking that, you know, we'll be entering into negotiations in the fall for success or agreement, so you will be looking at all of those stipends then.
That's great.
Yeah, to me, the, the argument that this is, this is a unique requirement for the situation we're in due to COVID, and the flexibility that it gives Rich and his team to have people as staff rather than volunteer, and the responsibilities that they're able to take on because of that, and the fact that he has found a way to fund it within the budget, to me, it makes sense to do. So.
I'll definitely entertain a motion, if anyone wants to make one.
I'll make a motion to approve the six assistant coach stipends.
Motion by Meg?
Second.
Second by Leah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and I'm an aye as well, so that passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, I really, really appreciate it.
Thank you for all this work. And good luck to our athletes and to you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Nice to see you in person.
Yes, yes, it is.
Yes, thank you, Rich. I know you've worked really hard on this, so thank you. And Evan, thank you for your work on that schedule, I can't say it enough.
I, I can't understand the high school schedule in a non-COVID year.
Me either. All right, so, all right, Dr. Kavanaugh, I have to make up 15 minutes. Let's see. How about the Marathon School gift account?
Okay, now, this one is pretty easy. Oh, I am just looking for you to approve $239.80, a box tops for education donation to the Marathon School gift account, please.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Meg, second by Leah. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No, it's unanimous, and it passes. And we have superintendent's goals.
Okay.
Dr. Kavanaugh.
All right, so what you're going to see is I have four goals here, and I am sort of awaiting, you know, one of the academic goals really until we sort of solidify the school improvement plans, and then also, you know, the district improvement plan. But this first one does actually have an academic component to it. I don't know if it's helpful to see this, why not? So this first one is my COVID-19 goal, in response to COVID-19, create a three contingency strategic plan to be submitted to DESI, shared with the community, the primary focus of which will be to improve access and achievement for all students based on where the district was last spring. So we really do have, you know, a lot of questions about where kids are, and when I made my presentation to the faculty on opening day, some of the research that's come out of the Annenberg Institute at Brown University would tell us that in reading, for example, with our elementary kids, they've probably made 68% of the gains that they should have made, you know, 100% in a given year, but in math, it could be anywhere between 37% and 50%. So we've got a lot of work to do there. So a lot of these things that you see up there are things that we have really already done on, on the way. But if you start with number six, purchase, implement, and train faculty to use a learning management system, Schoology, so that will be really helpful to us for, you know, our remote kids, for our hybrid kids at the at-home day, and in the event that we, and it may be inevitable, all have to go remote, Schoology will be that method that we use to communicate with our kids. Last year, we heard a lot about students being confused, they didn't know where to, you know, access that material. Was it in an email? Was it in, you know, Google Classroom? Did, you know, the teacher just send it out to you, you know, through Google Doc? I'm not sure how to find it. Schoology should get all of those modules up there with a scope and a sequence and pacing and assessments and all the tools that kids need. Number seven, to run a course called The Modern Teacher during the summer of 2020, and offer this professional learning during the first 10 days of school. As Mr. Bishop said, our teachers really are sort of, you know, intensely working on this stuff, because we've got to get it ready. I mean, we are teaching in a very different way, shape, from anything we've known previously. Use attendance-taking and evaluation of instructional strategies to ensure high student engagement, especially during at-home days and during elected remote learning when provided by HPS teachers. Obviously, we wouldn't be evaluating anyone in a online course that wasn't our own. But I do think that our administrators will be in those courses this year, in our Zoom sessions, you know, ensuring that what we have going out is really high quality. For at-home days, we can always be taking a look at what is being pushed out through Schoology. We'll, you know, obviously be doing a lot of that, even looking at those kind of common plans, the kind of thing that you saw that was Dan Collins earlier today. Continue to survey parents and faculty members to gather information about the efficacy of our programming. I think it will be really important for parents to give us feedback, how are we doing? You know, are the at-home days working? Do they work with kids at the secondary level but not so well at the elementary level? You know, that information will be really important to us in terms of, you know, ensuring that we have, our kids have access to all of this curriculum and that they are thriving in it. You know, I do worry about some of our kids who are going to struggle to, you know, engage in the at-home learning, to engage in that, those remote settings. And, you know, it's been great that we have been able to have the, you know, space and the budget to bring some kids in five days a week, because I do think that some of our kids would, you know, in terms of that catch-up piece, it's going to be really, really important. And I probably should have added that to one of the process benchmarks up there. And really, just to monitor the use of our grant money, the $225 per student as they're funding, 1.6 million in the care, to ensure that students get what they need in terms of safety, instruction, and access to curriculum and food. And I think, you know, maybe even tonight, Mr. Bishop asking for 2.2 FTEs kind of speaks to that need. You know, when we need these people to be in front of our kids, we're going to go to the ends of the earth to make sure that our kids are getting the, the instruction that they need, the class size that they need, the safety. We talk about you can't exceed 14, 15, 16 kids in given class sizes. So that's kind of where we are. I won't go through all of the product benchmarks, because they really just kind of tell you, how will we know for sure that I have done all of those process benchmarks? But you can kind of take a look at, so like number five, for example, a written review of evaluations coupled with responses from parents regarding the quality of curriculum and instruction. So that will come to you as kind of a culminating document, so that you have a sense that the 10 things that you see above have actually been done, and that families and kids have made achievement. We can't be sure that there'll be MCAS testing this year, there's no way to be, at this point, the commissioner says that there will be, and, you know, in some ways, we like the MCAS test, because it's a really nice metric. But we will also have BAS data, which is Benchmark Assessment System data for our elementary school kids. And reading, if we get that all accomplished, we have STAR reading that happens online. We didn't do that last spring, hopefully we can get through that this year, so that we have something that's actually not just assessing achievement, but also growth.
Is this a, a living document? Like when I do my reviews at work, right, it's the entire year, and at certain points, you can sort of add goals and like switch things around a little bit until the final review point. review point. Is this sort of a living document like that as well? Like, can you add points as, as you go along?
That's a really good question, Leah. So yes, period. This part here just lets you know the rubric aspects to which these things are tied. I will eventually fill in the strategic objectives so that you can see how it fits into the district improvement plan there. And just so you also know, these goals actually go from July 1st of 2020 because the old goals kind of expire in June and will go through June of next year, although we typically review them earlier than that. All right, a professional prac, and just so you know too, they all fit into categories of professional practice, student achievement, or district improvement. So my goal number two, which is professional practice, move the district toward greater proficiency in diversity, equity, inclusion, social justice, and anti-racism. And so one of the things that I did two years ago was I kind of started with the same goal. And each year, those process benchmarks and product benchmarks change, but I still truly believe in this work. And one of the things that Darmunisa Amonte Jackson had just said in a presentation she did to superintendents across the state was to do this work right, you've got to stick with it for 10 years. So here we go, we're embarking on year number three and we'll see how it goes. A couple of years ago, when we began, I thought we have to really kind of take this, you know, sort of slowly and methodically, and we started with the administrative team. At this point, I would say our admin team is really comfortable having these conversations. And so moving into this year, I included less chalk about it, using my blog to, you know, occasionally put out things about diversity, sensitivity, equity, and inclusion. Continue to diversify the HPS workforce, so hiring candidates of diverse backgrounds and races will, will be in there as well. Offering Visions training for all staff to ensure teachers know how to address classroom incidents and reported microaggressions. And a lot of that comes from, you know, really just not even having the language to start with, or you, sometimes you think that you're doing the right thing by taking a kid aside, but the other 24 in the room think, wow, that got overlooked, you know? So how do we deal with it in real time and have kind of the confidence to be able, and language to do that? Number five, we have engaged with Black Print Consulting through DESI. We get a wonderful grant to do that, and their goal is to help us look at our policies, structures, systems, the way we deliver pedagogically, curriculum, and things like that. So they really look at things, I think, from maybe a more, kind of like paper pencil kind of approach, as opposed to visions that looks at, you know, language and those interactions between colleagues and teachers and students. Grant Hightower, who I have mentioned before, is a consultant and we are going to use him to dialogue with our students. He's a Metco director and a pretty, we've had a couple of meetings with him and he's a pretty, like, very kind of down-to-earth, but I think if I were a kid, I would know that he not only had my back, but means business. You know, I really liked his delivery style and I liked his language and I thought he was really relatable for, for kids. You know, so we are teaching texts like, you know, Mockingbird, say, for example, in the eighth grade and, you know, lots of other different texts now of, you know, greater diversity. And we just want someone who would be able to, like, kind of work with our kids, not just our faculty, because I think it's really difficult for kids in classrooms to find the language and the courage to ask questions when they're not sure. To interrogate the curriculum to find entry points at all grade levels, so that's going to be more of the administrative work, you know, where is it that we can find places to kind of integrate any of that DEISJ and Abar kind of stuff? We were talking to Grant Hightower about that and one of the things that he shared with us is that, you know, as you're looking at kind of those entry points for, like, a math class, for example, it really might just be in the language that teachers and kids are using in that classroom. But if you're looking at, like, ELA and social studies, the, you know, opportunities are endless. Find at least eight bright spots in each building to be highlighted at full faculty meetings. So I think what I would do with that is every time we have an admin council meeting, just ask each principal to bring one of their bright spots, like, where is a place where you've seen something absolutely magnificent happen in the way of DEISJ and Abar? You know, we have some places where there are pockets of teachers doing amazing things and if we start to talk about them in our work at the district level and then they reflect on them at the building level, I think we'll be able to start to get some of that stuff out there. I will align myself with the Hopkins and Freedom Team, which I have done already. I go to most of those meetings and continue communication with the BIPOC kids. So, you know, they have started their website and I am now on an every other Monday set of communication with them. We used to do every Monday, but now the college is starting back up again. They're like, we're too busy for this. So they've kind of toned me down a little bit. And again, all of the product benchmarks there, I'll just give you a minute to take a look at those. I would be excited to see what our hiring metrics are going to look like. All right, I'll scoot along. The next one, I think, is my, oop, no, there we go. Another professional practice goal, to continue to grow communication between families and the superintendent. You know that I worked on that one a lot last year, but I want to keep that blog going and continue to use, you know, email as a school business and as a medium for school business communications. Continue to work proactively with individual families as needs arise. I think that that was one that I've, you know, always kind of prided myself on. If a family reaches out, I'm always very good about reaching back. Supporting principals' communications with families to ensure that our families are, you know, kind of getting what they need. And one of the things that we've been seeing with this change is that when, you know, a family has kids in multiple buildings, you know, that communication is really important so that, you know, if you have a marathon and a Hopkins kid, for example, that the same messaging seems to, to be going out. So we want people to feel like we've got that together. To communicate proactively, at least once monthly, with the community regarding increases in enrollment, and this, I think, will fall nicely into my final goal as well. And attempt to engage with different media outlets to gain support for this goal, including HCAM, the Independent, and any others. Using HCAM as always, as a medium to share information with the community and families. A major shout out to HCAM through this whole pandemic. They could not have been better. Thank you over there, Mike Terosian and all of your other HCAM friends. Foster transparency, sincerity, and frequent communication through the operating and capital budgeting processes. So, you know, that obviously is a long and drawn-out process, but I think as long as we are getting things out to news media and through HCAM, I feel like people feel we're okay. All right, this is where my elementary one will go as soon as we, we get that done. The, our school improvement plans were due on July 15th. We just messed around with them in August at our retreat, so I will be getting those all polished and we can get our building administrators here to look at these school improvement plans and the district improvement plan. All right, and then the fifth and last, oops, did I scoot by that? I think I did. Yep, here it is. Address enrollment growth and ultimately building youth, youth use and expansion throughout the district, resulting in a three-to-five-year written plan. So last year, we took a look at how many kids we had here and it was plenty, and that was before we had put on the modulars at Elmwood, the modulars at Hopkins, and the addition over here. So going forward, I think we need to really assess, you know, what are we looking at in terms of, you know, buildable land, in terms of enrollment predictions, and what do we need for our schools? So that we have a three-to-five-year plan going forward and that we are, you know, ready to, you know, build if we get approved by the Mass School Building Authority, MSBA, and, you know, to be thinking about what does it look like if, you know, Elmwood does come offline and all of that kind of stuff. That's really, really important work. So the first one is to work with Mrs. Rothermick, the Director of Finance and Operations, as well as Tim Person, the Director of Facilities, to get a district-wide enrollment impact on facilities working group together. So that would involve people from the community, people who are stakeholders in our own institution, you know, a school committee member, and also hire a consultant who would guide the work. I really do think it's important to have someone beside just, you know, the two of us or, you know, people who are kind of feeling their way in the dark. I think we need to have someone who's kind of an expert in this field, leading us forward. We would certainly review the report offered last year by, it should be Drummy, Rosane, and Anderson, DRA, and analyze what makes sense from a sort of budgetary of facilities and enrollment and an educational point of view, because all of those pieces need to come together. We would certainly hold public forums along the way so that people in the community can continue to hear where the work is and what our thoughts are. The Director of Finance and Operations and the superintendent will continue to update the school committee at these meetings. So we would be the two people who attend these meetings and a school committee member, obviously, too, who could continue to talk about, you know, any progress that we're making and make sure that that gets published so that people are seeing slide presentations and those kinds of pieces as we go. Attend the town's Growth Study Committee meetings, and I will do that faithfully. I'm just kind of an onlooker there. And issue a report to the community with recommendations to address enrollment and its impact on the district's academic and facilities planning. So that is my fifth goal and I can promise you that a, well, the empty space will be filled soon.
Any questions or comments?
A lot of work that has gone into these, obviously, but the bigger question is where do you have space to come up with all of this in the midst of everything else you've been dealing with this summer?
Well, every once in a while, I go in to fill around with them, but that's not very often lately. Once we get going, we'll, we'll be better.
I like, I like it. I think we saw a rough draft a while back and I think there's more of the student academic achievement in here and an acknowledgement of where we may have regressed a bit, given this current situation and steps you're going to take and metrics you're going to, you know, work, work toward.
I was really pleased to see the Visions training will be extended to all the staff because I think it's fantastic for everyone to have that common vocabulary about diversity and equity. So thank you so much for that.
Yeah, one of the things about that is we have been so lucky to get the DESI grant to have, you know, Title III, Title IV, and other monies to put towards some of these presenters. It's been amazing to have the money, you know, to do the work.
Yeah, I'm definitely really excited to see what happens with the curriculum and where it's taken. That's very, very cool.
So I'm not looking for you to approve any of this tonight. I just wanted to share it and we'll just plug that fifth goal in when the time comes, if you're okay with that.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, I wanted to thank you for putting, I think, in the first goal, the parent feedback on how our reopening is going. That's certainly something we've heard from the community. How will we know this is working? We've all never done this before, you know? And how, how will we check in? So I'm glad to hear that you're going to be surveying or checking in with families periodically. And on the fifth goal, you know, I'm excited. I think it seems maybe funny to some people to see the enrollment numbers for, right, this month, down a little bit in the pandemic that we're in. But the reality is the, the town, the district are thriving and when this sorts itself out, this pandemic, we will be facing the same challenges that we were already facing and the planning horizon is long. You have to start and have a game plan because you can't just turn, you know, a building around overnight. So I really appreciate the working group approach and the engagement with the community. I'm hoping where it says, like, hold, number three, hold public forums, not only to update the community, but also to workshop some concepts. Like, if we're playing with A, B, and C, I think the Marathon Building Committee did a really nice job of this, showing options and having the community weigh in. So I love that.
Great. If there's nothing else, we'll shuffle right along.
Okay. I think we are on policy JF, school admissions and residency requirements, fourth reading.
Okay. The only thing that has changed in this is you will remember that on the second page, we used to have all of the pieces under the green font on the second page where we had, you know, sort of, these are the kinds of things that would kind of launch an investigation on the part of the superintendent. And we decided that that might be more of an issue of practice as opposed to an issue of policy. So we removed that and I think there was someone in the community who very thoughtfully made that recommendation. And so other than that, this policy looks exactly as it did the last time we were together.
Did we hear any feedback on this when it went out this week?
We have not.
I haven't. Have you?
Nope.
Thank you to the hard-working policy working group, fitting these conversations in. Does anyone have any discussion or concern? Are we ready to take a vote at this point?
I think we're ready to vote.
Okay. There's no, if there's no discussion, I'll entertain a motion on policy JH? Let me see. JF, sorry, JF. The Hopkins School Committee Policy on School Admissions and Residency Requirements.
So moved.
Nancy, Nancy's moving to pass this. Any second?
I'll second.
Motion by Nancy, second.
As far as discussion on that, it's been seconded. We did get some feedback, right? And we incorporated that to your satisfaction?
I think part of the feedback was related to what we changed for tonight and taking out the list.
Taking the procedure stuff out and make it more policy.
Correct. But in the, I was asking in this last, we distribute every iteration and had we received any feedback on this last iteration? I don't think so.
Great.
So even motion by Nancy, second by Leah. All in favor?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, so it passes unanimously. Thank you. And policy EBCFA?
Okay, technically, you passed this one last time, but we felt like we had to bring it back because there were a couple of things that have happened in the, the last couple of weeks. First of all, I think the wording that we used last time was we said that it could be a disposable mask or a cloth mask is the language that we wanted. But as we did a little bit of investigation on disposable masks, we thought it should say a disposable three-ply mask because that, those are the ones that actually will keep our kiddos safe. So like this three-ply mask actually has, you know, the wire in it that will cling to the bridge of your nose and all of those things. So that was one thing that we recommended. A second thing was that we, we were a little bit worried about having that kind of blanket that said, if you're in a building, you must have your mask on because, you know, even at the central office, if people are in their own offices with the door shut, the masks can come off. So that's, you know, kind of what we were trying to convey on that second page where you see the yellow font. So the exceptions can apply to teachers or staff working in the building alone in defined spaces, such as teaching to a remote classroom, a classroom, or working in the main office in off-hours when the building is empty. So those are just two examples, but certainly if you are in your own office with the door closed and, you know, a nice contained defined space, you can take that mask off. And the third thing that has come up, and this has come up because parents have commented back on the first page in the second paragraph, that very last line in that paragraph, "On school transportation, students must wear a face shield in addition to a mask that covers the nose and mouth." And having done a little bit of research, one of the things that we have learned is that the shield essentially is there, it doesn't so much protect things coming out as it does things coming in. So, for example, it will protect the eyes, it may put like another layer of protection, you know, in front of the mask, but it doesn't protect those around you so much as it protects the wearer. So those are the things that have been commented upon or suggested for change in that policy, even though we passed it last time.
Did you have recommended wording to address, or any recommended change to address the statement that says, "On school transportation, students must wear a face shield in addition to a mask that covers the nose and mouth"? Did you want to leave it like that or did you have a?
Well, that's totally up to the committee, but we are still giving every kid a face shield. We think that that's really important. And the reason we started with the face shields was that as we put kids in buses, and you know, from the day that we practiced, the state is letting us put 26 kids in a 77-seat bus, which means that we're going to have one kiddo in each one of those buses. And if Mrs. Rothermick and I were sisters, we could inhabit a seat together because we lived in the same household, which would make her just a little bit closer to the kid in the aisle across. So what we're saying is kids will be seated in our buses very close together, you know, much more so than they would be in the classroom, which is why we originally wanted every kid to wear that face shield, just as a second layer of protection. I have heard from parents that their concern is that, you know, and this has happened to me several times tonight, I'm talking, my glasses steam up, well, then my glasses and my shield will steam up and then what? And it will be hot and it'll be harder to breathe if you're like a young kid with smaller lungs and. lungs and when you try to breathe through and you have a shield and a mask, all of that. So, those are the things I've heard from parents.
That makes sense to me. I mean, you know, you hear some people say, "Oh, I don't, I don't wear a mask, so I'm not worried about getting it," you know? And it's like, well, the mask is to protect other people. So, this is a courtesy to everyone else. If you're concerned about getting exposed to something, I think that's the purpose of the shield, right?
Yes.
So, I don't know, maybe are we, are we to discuss whether we need both? Is that what we're talking about?
The question on the table is, do we want to pass it as written, or are there any modifications? We can also make a motion to pass it with an edit.
Yeah, it does seem like a lot, but it seems like the, in my opinion, the mask should be required. The shield, I do see some people walking around with the shield because they're very concerned about themselves not getting it, but I don't know. I mean, do we have guidance from CDC, or where did we come up with having both? Is the DESI or CDC say have both, or are we just saying both is better than one?
I think we had made that decision a very long time ago when it was recommended that people were wearing, like, both masks and shields in, you know, medical places and that sort of thing. We thought we would really be able to protect children.
Right.
So, here's my only concern with taking it out. I think as long as those windows are open, I think it's fine taking it out. I think you're getting enough air movement, et cetera. But if you're talking about a really, really cold day or a snowstorm or something where the bus windows are actually up, now you have a very small enclosed space with not great circulation, and in those situations, having the extra layer of protection might be good. But I definitely don't think it's necessary all the time. I'm just worried about those particular situations where the windows end up closed.
So, I think, I think the research you did shows mostly that it's, it is an available choice to protect the wearer. So, I think the question is, if we provide the shields and make them available, but a wearer feels more at risk with two layers of face coverings than, you know, just because of other maybe respiratory concerns, you know, can the wearer opt not to wear the shield and get on the bus?
Right, and that's what I was saying, like, so, most of the time, the windows on that bus are going to be open. So, just wearing a mask without a shield should not be an issue. You have a ton of air circulation. It should be good. I'm, the only time that that concerns me is during really bad inclement weather, and the windows have to close. And now, you're wearing a mask, but you also have very poor air circulation happening. I mean, I don't know the answer, but I'm just saying that's the one place where I'm like, "Ah, the shield would then add an extra layer of protection in that situation from droplets," right?
For the wearer.
For the wearer, right, because the air is not circulating well. So, the aerosol staying in the area, but that's the only time.
Even though everyone has a mask. I feel like we're starting to talk about, like, health policy things. I'm not, it sounds to me like the idea of having both came from an era a long time ago, like a month or two ago.
Pandemic time.
Right, yeah, and I would like an update on what the health policy guidance is, so we don't have to make health policy here. But as I understand it, the mask prevents aerosols from getting out into others. And however, if someone feels better having their child have a shield too, we should be providing it.
Does it make sense to just change must to may, and at the end of that sentence, put in something to the effect of, "On school transportation, students may wear a face shield in addition to a mask that covers the nose and mouth," and then, just to be clear, saying, "As six feet of social distancing would not be possible in the bus," or something like that? I mean, that's the only reason we're really recommending it, is that you don't have six feet of social distancing.
You don't have six feet of social distance in the bus?
No. I mean, you don't even have to put that in. You could just put may if you choose to put may.
Yeah, I like the idea of putting the may in, but I don't know if we need the rest.
Well, my only concern is if, if we don't change it and we don't meet again before the start of school, then everybody has to get on the bus with those, with both layers. And if there are many families who are uncomfortable and there isn't enough science to mandate it, then I would want to give families the option. Because we certainly don't want to start kids off on the first day of school anxious about their face coverings. So, you know, I wouldn't normally want to rush an edit, but I feel like, you know, where we didn't have maybe all the information and thanks to a resident who's family member, I believe, is in healthcare at Children's.
Right.
Yes. I'm comfortable with changing it to may, but I also want to look at the sentence before, the disposable three-ply mask. I would recommend that we put, or better, because a KN95 mask, which is actually a better mask, has four layers to it. And the cloth mask, for, my recollection was that we had had some discussion about having a multi-layered cloth mask, that there was some, and that, was there some discussion about whether or not we would allow gator masks, which I don't see in here either?
Oh, we, we, it should be in here.
Why do I not see, I don't see that in here, though?
We are not allowing gators.
Where, can you show me where that is in the, like, what paragraph?
So, it's right under the bullets. So, the very next sentence, under the bullets. It says, "The Hopkinton Public Schools will not allow neck gaiters, bandanas, or masks with an exhalation valve."
Sorry, under which bullets?
So, the, the paragraph we've been talking about, there's a bunch of bullets underneath it, and then right below those bullets starts a sentence that says, "The Hopkinton Public Schools."
I don't have that in my copy.
Maybe I'm looking at an old copy.
I have, under that paragraph we're discussing, where it starts with a face covering that covers the nose, mouth must be worn, there are no bullets under that paragraph in the copy that I'm looking at. And then, the next thing I see after that paragraph says, "Masks should not express the following obscenities, threats, lewd, or vulgar language, et cetera."
It did use to have language.
It did. It did. That's why I was, it's not in this copy, you're right.
So, I was looking at the one just in the Google Docs area. I wasn't looking at the one in the agenda, so I don't know what it says.
Okay, I'm looking at the one in the packet.
Maybe the packet got the wrong copy.
I think the packet got the wrong copy.
Do you, could you pull up the correct copy?
Let me see if I can do that. I believe I can.
I wouldn't prolong this, only just that we have the first day of school coming. I think it's important we get this right.
Yes, I feel like I don't want kids having to get on a bus with a...
Well, Dr. Kavanaugh looks to see if she can pull up the right language. Is it okay with the committee if we put off a discussion on our communications till next meeting? I want to give that due justice, and I feel like we're already running late.
While we wait? Anyone mind?
Surely.
Sure.
As superintendent. Well, I have to, I don't know why I have to go back. I think I should know this by heart. As superintendent, I recommend that the school committee approve the items by consensus as outlined in your agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Meg, second by Leah. All in favor?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so all opposed? None. It passes unanimously. Items by consensus. Does anyone have future agenda items?
They could always email them if they come up later, too.
You can always email them. I'm just filling the tongue.
Any further discussion on, on the diversity training would be great, like updates, et cetera.
We also had contracted with Visions to have a second training with the Youth Commission that was going to be a half-day. We did back in January, the school committee and the Youth Commission and various town personnel did a day-long training with Visions, but there was supposed to be a follow-up with that, for one thing.
And that was great. I really, I thought that was great training.
But we could do other stuff as well, just, that kind of popped into my head after we had the last meeting.
Yeah, that sounds awesome. I just, like I said, I want to find something targeted that we know we can apply at our level, like that, that's, in my head, that's the goal, is what, what can we take and actually use at our level to make sure that we're including diversity and equity in the things that we can do.
Right. Agree.
How are you doing, Dr. Kavanaugh?
Oh, I'm finding a lot of versions of this, but I'm not sure if I'm... Leah, do you have? Last week's packet, or last meeting's packet, we didn't, did we make changes to it last time? As it was in the packet? Yeah, Leah, if you have the more recent one and you want to share it with me, I can put it on the screen.
Oh, um...
Hold on, I think I found it, actually.
I don't know if it's the more recent one. It's just the one that was on the drive with the packet. Oh, you're, you're on it according to this.
Yep, I just got it.
Oh, okay.
Just, 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 just got it.
So, I, I don't know if this is the right one or the packet one is the right one.
Can I just ask, did you guys meet as a Policy Working Group after the last meeting? No.
No, it was right before. It was right before.
So, there's the bulleted list that we're talking about, right?
Yeah.
Oh, and there's the gaiters and the bandanas.
I remember having that conversation, I just didn't.
Yep.
So, if you want, what we can do is, I can just put these edits in here right now. So, after three, you want it to say, or...
Or better.
Or better.
Or greater.
Three ply or, yeah.
Perfect. Yep. And do we want it to say a multi-layered cloth as opposed to? Oh, I think it does say it down here in this list, include multiple layers of fabric. And...
Oh, wait, and may.
Yes, scrolling back up.
On school transportation, students may wear...
Instead of must.
Yeah.
Okay. Got to take must out, too.
Yeah, she did. She suggested.
Yeah, it's hard to look.
It's crossed out in green.
There we go.
Okay.
My eyes are not as sure.
Could you scroll down, sorry, to the language at the bottom about the, when you're alone in your classroom? Just want to make sure. I like, I think that's really important, we get that in there.
I really like that, too.
And that's exactly as it appeared.
On the other sheet. I think this looks good. I think it's an improvement.
I agree. I do, too.
All right.
If there's no more discussion, I'll definitely take a motion. If you want to discuss more, we can do that.
I'm going to share that with Georgette right now so that we get the right one in there.
I make a motion to accept it with those amendments.
Motion by Meg to accept the Policy EBCFA as amended tonight. Looking for a second?
Second.
Second by Leah. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And it passes, so we have passed, again, a new and better Policy EBCFA. We've never done this before. It's our first pandemic, and I think, I really appreciate the thought that we've all put into it and the community and the feedback that we've gotten from the community.
Can I suggest that hopefully it's our only pandemic, not just the first?
You're not having fun?
It's all funny games.
I have to say that, that I, I agree with you. I really appreciate that the community has been taking the time to read these policies. That's been really great, all the feedback we've been getting.
I love when the process works. Makes me very excited. Okay, so, process-wise, we need a motion to adjourn, I believe, at this point.
Oh, yes.
And of course, I look to Meg.
I move to adjourn this meeting right now.
Motion to adjourn by Meg.
Second.
Second by Joe. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and I'm an aye as well. Thank you very much for your time and patience tonight. Thank you to HCAM. Thank you to the community for watching. Our next meeting is currently scheduled for September 17th at 7:00 PM, and I believe we'll probably be back here.
Wow.
So, good luck to the start, to everyone for the start of school if we don't see you before the 17th.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.